Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Borough Council of Borough Highlands. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Avery Park Press and the Two Over Times, and by posting at the Borough of Highlands Municipal Building and filing with the Borough Clerk on March 17, 2022. The items listed on the agenda are subject to change. Councilmember Sorentus. Councilmember Chalak.
Here.
Councilmember Malnick. Council President Olszewski.
Here.
Mayor Bouyam.
Here.
Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On tonight's agenda, we have the discussion item of regionalization of Highlands, Atlantic Highlands, and Seabright in the K through 12 school districts.
Right as we're getting started, we're going to do a little bit of an overview. There's been a ton of articles going around in the newspapers. There's been a lot of chatter on the lovely, always up-to-date Facebook pages. But just to give a brief overview of pretty much where we've been, where we are now, and what we're looking to accomplish here. So since the early 1960s, it's been a discussion to join these three community schools. There's been thoughts on how and why to do it over the years. Sometimes it gains momentum, then it's off again. Back in 2019, the momentum started again, and the boroughs of Atlantic Highlands, Highlands, and Seabright got a LEAP grant to do a study with from ProGEO. And they studied what it would be to join Atlantic Highlands and Highlands in a regional K through 12 school. Since then, they've updated it with new numbers, with the census being released, with the catastrophe of COVID happening, and just a lot of the different places where folks have moved. I would say that our census numbers are probably 95% incorrect. I know a great deal of folks in this town alone that never took it, never got the card, didn't know about the website. So it's a moving target. The census always has been, but to try to conduct a national census during a global pandemic is flawed thinking, in my opinion. Anyway, so the next step is where we are now. Where we are now is we got our plan updated. The schools, school boards, the three together, they got their own LEAP grant, so they're doing a study with different folks, but they're doing pretty much a similar study to the one that we've already completed. That is expected to be released in April or May. And we are eager to see what that study looks like, because just from my own personal background and 30 years of market research, I would love to see when two entities study the exact same thing, are the results different? It's just something, just from my own education, that I'd like to see that. But the real challenge here is what we're looking to do is to get this on the ballot. What these meetings are right now are not for what is the funding formula going to be, how much dollars or cents are going to be saved by this entity or that entity. What this is about is giving the people the right to vote on how their tax dollars and how their children are being schooled and educated in our communities. And I think it's very, all of those other details can completely get meshed out once both of the studies are out, and then everyone can come together and say, well, this is what ours, this study says, this is what this study said, oh, they said the same thing for this, or however it breaks down. But I think the most important thing that we can do now, and why we're having these meetings on an educational basis, is just to get that power into the voting room that belongs with the people. And with that, I wanted to introduce Vito Gaido and Carrie White, and they are our special counsel in regards to regionalization. Before I hand it over to them, though, I just want to know if anyone here had any questions that they wanted to direct to Vito or Carrie about all of these things, where we were and where we are and where we want to be. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, good evening, everyone. I think our primary role here tonight is very nice, sort of bringing everyone up to date. You know, as the mayor just pointed out, for all the things being said and all the things being written, there is no public body anywhere that is going to make this decision as to how the schools look and how the schools are funded. You know, very pointedly, we see on the news every night and every morning that there are people half the world away willing to sacrifice all they have to preserve the very essence of their democracy. And it's a valuable thing that we have the luxury of taking for granted from time to time, but this process really is about as pure a democratic process as you can have. There is an issue of great significance to the communities. The leaders of those communities ask independent experts to analyze a way to address the area of interest. At the end of the day, the matter is submitted to the voters, as the mayor appropriate has said, for the voters to decide how their tax dollars are spent and how their children are educated. Every community in America, with the possible exception of public safety, there is no greater issue for the populace. So all that's going on here is a process that is designed to allow the voters to decide on how to do something different. If the savings and the educational benefits are debated and put to the voters, what do the voters want to see? And that's really what we're in the process of doing. At this moment, facilitated by Senator Scanlon and facilitated by Mark Magyar, who was the policy advisor on these issues, Senator Swinney now heads his public policy school at Rowan, there is an effort to cooperate with the two different approaches to studying the issue that were described by the mayor. So we are hopeful that we will see this study done by the school boards within the period that the school boards have promised, which is between now and the end of May. And again, the dual effort that is within municipal bodies and the school boards is to get something submitted to the voters in these communities by November. So that is, as I said, and I think we deserve, I think the communities have to recognize that those officials deserve some gratitude in terms of saying, look, this is a challenging enough issue for the public as it is. If the elected officials are working in some cooperative fashion submitting it to the matters of the public, then the public will have what it needs, I'm sure, will have forms like this where the actual details are discussed. That's not the way tonight is about. Tonight's a matter of discussing the process. So the municipal study is done, the folks have seen it, it's been updated, you've seen that. School boards will have a, the school boards will have a study submitted sometime in the next six or seven weeks. And then, as I said, the goal facilitated by the senator and by Mr. Magyar is to move the process along and get this where it belongs, which is in the hands of the voters, as soon as November. So for now, in any event, I suspect there are, despite all that may have said, questions about the process and how we get from where we are at this moment to that vote in November. I don't know if there's anything else you want to share, but then with the indulgence of the mayor, we're happy to respond to any questions, as I said, about the process. I guess it's from where we are here, the first week of April, until we get the folks who make the decisions in what should be that set of months. I want you to discuss the process if you want. I think we can anticipate some of your questions, so Carrie will talk about the details of the process, and then, as I said, with the indulgence of the mayor, we're happy to answer your questions.
Hi, okay, thanks. I didn't want to pull your microphone too far away, Mike. So the process generally requires what you've already seen. So at least Highlands and the Borough of Seabright have both passed resolutions to submit the issue of a binding referendum to the voters. That issue needs to be submitted first to the Commissioner of Education for approval. So if all three communities decide that's the direction they want to move, and they submit a petition to the Commissioner of Education, the Commissioner of Education will review that petition. Commissioner really looks at a variety of things, and under the LEAP grant, the Commissioner is supposed to look at some very specific things, including items such as the racial balance in the different schools, the educational makeup, what the educational program will look like, transportation, geography. There are a number of specific things in the statute that the Commissioner needs to look at, make sure are both studied and come out in a specific way that the Commissioner can approve, moving forward with whatever the ultimate question is. So once that approval comes from the Commissioner of Education, then the communities will work together, the municipal governing bodies, along with the Boards of Ed, to put together a question. So that question will explain to the public very clearly, what are you being asked to vote on? And if it happens to be the creation of a PK through 12 regional school district, it will say that. Do you approve the creation of a PK through 12 regional school district with the following three communities, Atlantic Highlands, Highlands, and Seabright? If that's the question that's ultimately approved, then it also will include specifically the tax allocation method. So as the mayor mentioned a few minutes ago, that's something that's going to be decided long before the voters need to make a decision. So by the time it comes to you, you will absolutely know what is the tax allocation method going to look like between the three communities, and even what that anticipated tax levy looks like. It's often right there on the referendum question for you to analyze. Our understanding also throughout that process is once the petition is approved by the Commissioner of Education, the communities will again post similar public forums like this, where the specific details of the different capability studies will be discussed in detail, so that the members of the public, you all, and everyone who's not here tonight, have every opportunity to be able to ask every single question about what is this going to look like? Who will make up the Boards of Education? Who will sit on the Boards of Education? When will this start? What will the education look like in the different communities? What will the tax savings be? All of those specific questions, you will have plenty of time to get answers to those questions before you're asked to cast a ballot on November 8. Okay, thanks. So that question has to be submitted to the county clerk in August, so this process will move forward before the Commissioner, then it'll go to the county clerk for the printing of the ballot, and then it'll be on the ballot and on that public forum. If that's what the three communities decide to do to move forward.
Okay, so unless, again, I'll refer to you, Mayor, and members of council, if you have any questions, I'll yield to you, and I'll look as you see fit.
I think we have our due. Hi, if you could read the statements for public portion?
Sure.
At this time, we have the public portion, and individuals wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their name, address, and the group, if any, they represent. Although the council encourages public participation, it reserves the right to its presiding officer to terminate remarks and/or by any individual not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. If any individual refuses to conduct themselves in a proper manner, they will be removed from the meeting. The council will not, during the public portion of this meeting, discuss matters involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of promotion or discipline of any specific or prospective or current employee. Do any members of the public have a question?
Hi, I'm Donald Kleecker. I live at One Smith Drive, Barton Flack Lane, in Highlands. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, although I am a member of the Board of Education for the head of the Hudson Municipal District. And I read very carefully the proposal, and I had two questions. One is, I look at all the numbers, and none of the numbers seem to look at the impact at the taxpayer level. And I hope that when all is said and done, we'll be able to see what the group proposal says at the taxpayer level, or what the Board of Education proposal says at the taxpayer level. But the question, why didn't you see the impact it's going to have on our household here in Highlands, Highlands voter that pay Highlands taxes? That's my topic over here. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm keen in court to qualify the education. The second issue was, you said that, this was kind of neutral, but in the proposal, unless I read it all, I stopped while I read it all, you actually proposed funding 95% in only 5% allocation, which dramatically swings the pay receiver. And I wouldn't bring this up, but you said there were no proposals as such. How did you propose a proposal, unless I read it all? You suggested that would be a 95-5 relationship, as opposed to the way we do, which is essentially 100% allocation. And if it was 100% allocation, it would be much more in favor of Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, and to the disadvantage of Seabright, and my guess is Seabright is the bottom line. Whereas the 95-5 proposal that you had, strongly in favor of Seabright, I ran some numbers with the Atlantic Highlands saves about $56 a year, and Highlands saves about $300. So I was just wondering, some of these issues, if you had said, yeah, taxpayer level, and whether or not it led to a vote in the 95.
Sure. So I'm happy to get into some of that. One of the great ironies, of course, is what is that? It is the Board of Education on which you sit that asks us not to get into that level of detail tonight. So the ironies, the first question comes from a member of it. Have you got some more?
Is it inside the number of houses?
Sure.
You could do that if you're afraid.
Sure. So obviously, the curators don't get to vote, so we would want to reduce it to that level, sir. So first of all, the reason you don't see an assessment based upon the average assessed home is because no funding formula has been agreed to by the three communities to submit to the voters. So that didn't have no good. I know you spoke, and I'm answering your question. So I am certain that by the time we get to that point, the communities will want to share that, to show the dramatic impact and benefit to the taxpayers. You know, virtually all of the savings that Highlands and Atlantic Highlands enjoy comes as a result of Seabright's participation. Without Seabright, the savings for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands would be about $165,000 a year, because those three school boards do such a great job sharing services already, so just combining them alone, without an infusion of Seabright students and money, there aren't a lot of savings. Some educational benefits, no doubt, but not savings. And you were focused on numbers, not on the educational benefits. So it's the inclusion of Seabright that allows, under the example you used, the one from the report, the 95-5, for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands combined, to save about $1 million a year off the school tax levy. How that is allocated, which was part of your question, is something the three communities need to decide, and as Ms. Rice pointed out, will need to decide that before a question is submitted to the county clerk in August. So sometime between now and August, the board on which you sit and the two constituent boards will release their study. The communities, if they so choose, and I expect they will, will discuss how to allocate the tax savings, and the fact that there will be savings is not really an issue. And then that's ultimately the question that will be considered by both of the governing bodies to submit to the public. As far as the example that you were describing, the one that's in the report, I think the critical component, and this is what's in the narrative of the report, that the quote and chart you were describing, is that it makes sense, of course, if you're going to submit this to the public, that all the communities benefit, both financially and educationally. So we recommended a, an allocation that was examined by our educational experts, by our financial experts, by the demographer, as one that would assure annual savings for each of the three communities going forward. If that's the formula that the communities choose, that's fine, I don't know that it will be, but certainly, from our standpoint, it's critical that all of the communities enjoy savings. One last point in response to what you said, as far as the savings in Seabright is concerned. So Seabright right now is paying to Shore Regional about $3.2 million to educate about 60 kids. Now, I, I see some head shaking. My point is this, the per pupil cost, if you take the tax that Seabright pays, divided by the number of kids, comes to about $165,000 per pupil. So Seabright, no matter what it does, if it does something different, stands to save an extraordinary amount of money. In an effort to make this work and to make this more palatable to Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, since they can't save much money on their own, Seabright is basically saying, and the new statute permits, get to shift a significant amount of those savings to Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. But I cannot, as I sit here tonight, tell you precisely what that's going to be, but that's not because we couldn't figure it out with different aspects of the formula, it's just the communities haven't agreed on it. I think your final premise is one with which I agree completely. In order for the public to be as informed as it should be when casting its votes, that number should be included. And as I said, I'm confident the number is going to provide significant annual savings for each of the three communities, but precisely what that number is, none of us will know until the governing bodies of each of the three of them have that discussion.
John Crowley to East End Drive, Atlantic Highlands. John, I was going to say something, and then I wasn't going to say anything, and now I hear more water, and my temperature just rises, and I can't prevent myself from saying what I'm going to say. I'm going to try to be state polite and be less trite than what I've written, so I'm editing as I go. I'm first going to say that I'm disappointed in this body. Your state senator asked him to take a breath. Your state senator said, stand down. This shouldn't be happening tonight. This should be happening after the Hudson Report released the report, and men are just presenting one side of a flawed report. We should be presenting to the public both sides of the argument. The Hudson Report, to the best of my knowledge, is formed by several different experts and groups, taking apart transportation, facilities, plastic, so on and so forth. To anybody here in this room that's not aware, this report that we're talking about tonight, by the way, I've read old versions, top to bottom, is conducted by one law, it's their perspective, and they work for Seabright. Yes, Atlantic Highlands chipped in, yes, Highlands chipped in, but it was initiated by Seabright. So I think it's fair to say that we know who the client is, and we know how things are slammed. And I believe you said in our meetings that it's your job to make Seabright happy, make your client happy.
You know, so much of what you said is false, and I would let it go.
I'm ready.
Okay, we're going to do this one at a time, without a back and forth. Everyone can remain calm and remain civil, or you choose.
Okay.
Okay? So I'm going to start, I'm going to start right now. The state senator did not elect anybody on this governing body.
That's it.
Okay. Well, this governing body works for the people of Highlands. People of Highlands want this to happen, and that is why we're having this meeting. So I find your characterizations to be false and not be made in a collaborative manner in which that is the manner that our state senator is asking us to do this task. Three Boards of Education and three councils to be adversarial at this point in time, when we are just trying to educate the public on this is the process and these are the things that happen, is completely untruth, in my opinion.
And I said that your state senator elected you. What I said is that you received a message from a state senator saying to take a breath. And the way to really do a town hall is to present both sides of the argument, as opposed to one side. That's it. I'm not your town hall booth.
I'm his side.
I want to cover when people say that there's a savings to the taxpayers. The truth of the matter is, you know that I've asked you on a couple of occasions, where are the guaranteed savings to the taxpayers? And the responses pinned to me, there are no guaranteed savings. There are no guaranteed savings in this study. Anybody who says anything differently, that's factually incorrect. I'd also just like to ask the public, when's the last time there was a proposed savings and it was ever handed back to the public? When was money ever given back to the public? Or something like this? It's not going to happen. The best we can do is make the whole flat. But to say these claims that there's going to be guaranteed savings are just not the truth. I also want to talk about when people say that this is going to be forced upon us, one way or another, by Trenton. I'd like to ask, what politician is going to put themselves on the horn and tell parents that they've got to move their kids to another school? It won't happen. It's not going to happen. This is not going to be, because this is a fear factor that is not going to come into play. And if you don't believe me, ask Steve Swinney. Sorry, we can't ask Steve Swinney, because he was voted out by a truck driver. Or is that...
If we can please remain on topic. There's other, there's a lot of, being defeated by a truck driver has nothing to do with school regionalization. There's a lot of other people here that want to speak. So I would ask me to be mindful of the other people that want to speak tonight.
I didn't hear one. I'm all ears, but I didn't hear one. But you're being uncouth then with the back and forth and the interruptions. I'm going to say that when we talk about, I'll close up, because I think there are people that want to speak, so that's true. I'm going to say, this doesn't belong in the hands of Americans. When we talk about putting it in the hands of the voters, where this belongs is with the Boards of Education. We've got three Boards of Education that all voted down, and they're coming out with their study, waiting for the study, and that's what we should be doing, not this. So put it back in the hands of the Board of Education, and we should be sitting here and having...
Mayor? Yes, sir. I'm not going to respond to all of that, if there are a couple of faults.
Yes, the greatest one, please. Thank you.
So first of all, what the mayor and council were asked to do was not to present a town hall where they go over the details of the study. And as we've said several times tonight, we're not going over the details of the study. We're here to describe the benefit of the public, that ultimately they're making the decision, the process. And that's what we have tried to do, despite efforts to derail us. So the argument that we were told by the state senator to put this meeting, I don't know any state senator would say, don't inform the public about something on which ultimately we are going to vote. Second, the description that the study that we released originally in 2019, and then updated late last year, was done by only one group, which I've heard several times and seen several times in writing, demonstrably false. Right? So we are attorneys. The educational expert, the demographer, the financial expert, the financial expert and the demographer are not attorneys. They are consultants with whom we've worked before, but we don't tell them what to say, nor did our clients tell them what to say. We were asked to do an analysis, and we did so. The educational experts include Dave Heskey, who is an attorney and is affiliated with our firm, who's also Commissioner of Education twice. Indeed, fun fact, to the extent that there is anybody involved with presenting any of these studies, the only people who have had any experience whatsoever consolidating and reconfiguring school districts, that would be us. So our report was not only written by attorneys, but it was written by people who actually had experience doing precisely what you're talking about. As far as the comment about no quote-unquote guaranteed savings, I don't know what, I don't know what that was supposed to reference, but one of the things about the legislation that I would underscore is this. The legislation is designed to allow that formula that we talked about being submitted to the voters to have sort of a trigger in it, so that if the savings vary by a certain amount, the formula that the voters approve can be reset to provide for a certain amount of savings for each of the communities. So while a specific dollar figure of savings, you can't necessarily guarantee, you can only project year to year, but you do have something that the law didn't permit before beyond the simple nature of this structure. It also permits that you, before, went to one formula that has to exist for at least 10 years, and then in order to change, has to be submitted to the public for vote again. Here, you can build a change into the formula so that, I don't, again, wouldn't use the phrase guaranteed savings. phrase guaranteed savings, but you can be certain that if populations change, and that's the biggest variable, right, the number of students, that there is not going to be a situation where a community expects to save money, and then the savings evaporates, and it winds up costing them money. That can't happen here, if that is part of the formulaic structure and the voters approve it. So that's a remarkable development in this new law. And then finally, the comment that this is something, the visualization of school district is something Trenton would never force. Well, this law, quite frankly, goes further than Trenton has in quite a while. But if there's anybody here from Seabright, you already know that's not true, because you used to have your own school district, and a decade ago, Trenton forced you to dissolve your school board and consolidate with Oceanport. So not only is this something Trenton could do, it's something Trenton did to over a dozen school districts throughout the state. We have not said, by the way, that any of this should be driven by the fact that Trenton is going to do this to these communities tomorrow, that statement just happened to be false. But the issue here, I think, for the communities is to seize control, not vis a vis Trenton, but to seize control in the face of certain realities, in terms of the funding realities and in terms of declining enrollment. And again, I stress this, make a decision, what, if anything, you want to do about it. And it's our hope, again, and I think this is an issue on which we cannot carry from the school boards. It's our hope that there is going to be something worthy of voters' consideration in the November election, based on the time frame described by Ms. Redd. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
How's everybody doing? My name's Charlie Rooney, from Seabright, New Jersey, and live on 196 Ocean Avenue. Lived there since 1962. Ironically, my house, my kitchen window looks at Henry Hudson. So every morning, when I get out to have my coffee, I look across the street very likely to see Henry Hudson. I graduated from Shore Regional in 1978. So I took that nine-mile bus ride from Shore Regional every day for four years. Played sports, usually at 6:30 in the morning, 7 o'clock, get home at 7:00, 7:30 at night. So I think the children Seabright would enjoy a shorter bus ride, get over here to Highlands, Atlantic Highlands, eventually get to Henry Hudson, which is a great school. I actually went this past weekend to see the play in Chicago. I've seen Shrek, seen Frozen, they're amazing. Dr. Compton and Lord Kingsmore, amazing what they've done up there, especially since Sandy, getting that school back on track. My question is, though, that, let's just say that Atlantic Highlands is in order to move forward here with this regionalization. Does that mean this is over? Are there any other options?
Well, the law would provide for a mechanism where Highlands and Seabright, if they so chose, could do this themselves, a structure that should submit to the commissioners to make sure no student is left without a place to go to school. But based upon the other places where we're working on things like this, they say, even if everybody agreed to submit it to the public, and three communities wanted to regionalize and a fourth didn't, right, those three communities would be part of the regional, and the fourth that didn't would send their kids on a sending-receiving basis. So again, this law is designed to promote regionalization and not to give any community veto power over what the others do. So if Highlands and Seabright chose to do this, they could have a K-12 district, and if that's what happened, Atlantic Highlands would run a K-6 district, and its children would go exactly where they'd go now, they would just pay on a sending-receiving basis. But as I said, the law is designed to promote regionalization. It's part of the reason that the law wasn't successful in promoting regionalization before that, just because it required all or none as far as funding new school districts is concerned. This law has changed that dramatically.
So in the legislation that passed in January, and everyone should know that that legislation passed unanimously in the Senate and the Assembly. Every senator, assemblyman, woman voted for it, which says a lot. And the reason I think it passed is because they wanted to give back to the taxpayers. They wanted to take it away from the government. Council, it's not up to six council people to decide this. This is up to the taxpayers. It's your money, you're going to pay the tab. But at the end of the day, could Seabright join the Highlands?
Yeah, the law permits that. There's no question about that. And then the money that we bring over, would go to Highlands and Henry Hudson and not Atlantic Highlands. If Atlantic Highlands was only a participant on a sending-receiving basis, they would not enjoy the benefit of that tax. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a two-minute question. Yeah, I have a really, uh, two-minute question. My name's Tracy Abby White, Seven and Nuthen Road, Atlantic Highlands. I'm here representing myself as a taxpayer, but I was asked by the mayor and council in Atlantic Highlands to lead a group to basically bring the information that we have to the taxpayers of Atlantic Highlands, whether they are not opposing or endorsing anything. And I will, I will prepare a case, and during our proceeding, which was in January, no, sorry, February, I realized that we did not have any members from the boards of education, how can you have a conversation about education without any members of the boards of education? So we did extend that to them, instead of they did leave. There is some confusion on what's involved in both studies. One is just the charter district, and the other does include Seabright. I'm sure that will get, you know, and lately I've been reading in the paper, and that seems like things have changed, and if they have, that would be great. My question is, if we regionalize as a charter district, it's my understanding that all of the faculty will now go onto the highest salary guide. It's great for the faculty. Is that true?
So the short answer to that is no.
Okay. That's what I'm asking for.
So the way we have recommended proceeding, and I would be surprised if the school board, we're going to do anything different than that, is what you described would be the case if the Henry Hudson, this is going to seem super technical, but it is the answer to your question. What you said would be true if Henry Hudson was going to expand to become a, as you know, expand to become a K-12 regional. But that's technically not what's going to happen. The question that is submitted would dissolve the Henry Hudson Regional School District, as you know it, and a new school district would be formed. Because it's a new school district, it doesn't result in sort of a automatic increase in everyone's salaries, but it also doesn't erode the rights of the employees. So they are protected by law, so to the extent they are tenured employees, their jobs are protected, even if there's got to be a new collective bargaining agreement. The way I like to describe it is that the process of creating a new school district, such as the way you're considering here, that process is designed neither to increase nor diminish the rights of the employees. So if you say, well, you're saying all the teachers aren't protected? Hang on a second. The tenured teachers aren't protected, while the non-tendured teachers aren't protected? Well, they're not protected now. Right? So if the superintendent of schools were to say that there's a non-tendured teacher who for various reasons shouldn't have their contract renewed, that would be the case now. If you form a new school district, that's still the case. So their compensation, if they have tenure, their tenure rights, the seniority rights, all of that is protected, even if you're dissolving Henry Hudson and forming a new school district. But what happens to those not covered by tenure? They have no more and no less rights than they have at this very second.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, because what I understood from another theory was that they would all move to the highest salary guide. And my question, really, my concern, I would then, okay, so that's going to increase our taxes, because they're going to get a raise, and if we were not getting it in, folks and some myself, that would be problematic for the members of Atlantic Highlands. So that's my, that's my question. I don't, just, just a nice little go ahead.
It's fine.
Thank you. Question.
The way that this has taken place previously, as in the last time that a regional school district was formed, was South Hunter and Regional. And exactly what was done there, you can contact that school district to find out. The staff members who were moved over to the new regional school district had their salaries frozen at a specific level until the new collective bargaining agreement was negotiated. There is a provision about, okay, well, if you have, if you're taking three collective bargaining agreements, and they all have various different provisions in them, well, what do you do starting on July 1st, when you have a new school district? The largest unit, that collective bargaining agreement is the one that stays in place until you negotiate a new one. But when we sat down to negotiate South Hunter and, all three of those communities, the three different collective bargaining agreements came to the table, and they all had their things that they wanted, and they reached an agreement. Some things were out, some things stayed in, and then a completely new salary guide was created at that point in time. Staff members did not see enormous raises, they were just frozen on their spot where they were prior to regionalization, and then a new guide was created with whatever percentage it is that was negotiated, and it was spread around the guide exactly the same way it is now. And that's how it's done.
If you couldn't tell, who's the one that negotiated that?
Does anyone else have a question? Please. Thank you, Muriel.
Good evening. Kind of comment and a question, and it has to do with...
Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Chris Lucas, 61, East Parkview, Highlands, Atlantic Highlands, New Jersey, representing myself. And the question is really around the new study. So I understand that was a study done initially chartered by Seabright, subsidized, somehow funded by Atlantic Highlands as well. And I have to speculate, the hope was that study would be fair and represent a fair and biased opinion of what's at what time. It appears from outside looking in, some folks didn't like that answer, and now we're going to do another study. And my question is, if that study comes back with a different set of opinions and facts, which I would expect it to, which is why it's probably being done, right? If everyone agreed for the first study, we probably wouldn't do a second study. So as a voter, how do we reconcile these two separate sets of facts that are potentially coming our way? And I really wish, when the original, when Atlantic Highlands agreed to subsidize and pay for it, to me, that's written, and it feels like now, in Atlantic Highlands, we don't like the answer that came out, and we're leading a charge to now reevaluate it, hoping there's a difference, just as now. So help me understand, you might have the answer, why are we doing it? But if someone's potentially going to see two separate sets of facts, should I expect someone here to reconcile those? Or am I going to have to figure out where the truth is?
Well, I think this, in terms of the town hall that the mayor was referencing, I don't think that the idea is going to be, we just throw different sets of numbers out there and let the public figure it out. So I don't think it's going to play out that way. Other than the attorney hired by the school districts, I'm unfamiliar with the work of those experts, looking at folks we've seen and all the work we've done. But my expectation is that there will be an effort made by the experts and by the elected official, municipal and school officials, to reconcile and explain the numbers that allow the public to make an informed decision. I can't imagine that anyone with any position of responsibility would want anything else to happen.
Great. And then just the second question and comment is around the tax savings. So I'm not a politician, I don't know all of the details, but clearly there's money coming in. It feels like it would be up to the town government to decide how to allocate that money. Am I going to spend it more on education? Am I going to buy in fixed rates? Or am I going to pass it on to the tax savings? I don't know exactly how that formula works, but I think what can't be disputed, there is some level of money coming into a town, which basically people don't know either how, so maybe I'm way off on this, but to me, tax is something that's decided as a town and as a group, right? So if money comes in, someone, I don't know who it would be, would have some ability or team to decide how to allocate that money, whether it goes to the taxpayers or something else. So I didn't necessarily assume tax savings was what I wrote.
Okay. Just to give those a very micro lesson on the budget, the budget has many facets. There's the municipal budget, there's the school boards, the grammar school's budget, and then there's the regional school budget. On top of all that, there's also county, the library, open space, municipal open space. So what the boards of education do, they sit there with their bean counters and figure out how many beans it's going to take in order to school our kids for the next school year, and we do the same thing on a municipal level. Then they submit those budgets to the CFO, and then when you get your tax, though, it has percentages all looking out. So the council does not decide what the school's budget is, those were divorced many, many years ago.
All right.
We just collect it, and then we give it to the school.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm United, for now, United Center, Atlantic Highlands. I'm more interested in the time thing, in that this meeting is being brought to make sure that this question can get on the ballot, if this is what people want. So can you explain something, please, about the timeframe? I haven't seen or I don't know anything about the study that's being done by the school board now. I thought that that was supposed to be finished in April. Then I heard last week that it was going to be finished at the beginning of May, and now to mine, I heard by the end of May. So once that study is out, and I guess there will then be another couple hearing by the towns to determine both studies together, and then Atlantic Highlands has to make the decision whether it wants it to, whether they want to pass the resolution that the other two towns have already passed. And then if they pass it, and it goes to the commissioner of education, any idea how long it takes the commissioner of education to make up his mind? Because I know how it kind of works.
Thank you. So was it, can I interrupt you? You want me to talk about the timeline? Will you finish with that part of the question?
All right. My next, my next question would be, then as the government, as the commissioner makes this decision, whether it goes on the ballot or not, is that when the towns decide on the question? So the purpose of this, I'm interested in this. It doesn't sound like we're going to get this all done by August is my concern, that's all I ask.
Well, I think that's a shared concern. So there will be, let's assume that the board of education study comes out by mid-May. And I'm saying mid-May, not because anybody promised that to me, but because I want to take a time period from mid-May to mid-August. Right? So that's where the things that you described need to get done, both in terms of commissioner approval, and both in terms of commissioner approval, and the towns making a decision, not something that's been for the voters, but the if. What's the if? The if, as I described to you, also has to include the tax limit, right? Specifically, how is this district going to be funded? Because it's the tax allocation that allows you to do the calculations that were asked for it initially. What is each town going to save, and then how those savings get impacted on the average of that whole? So there's about a three-month window there in which the towns, towns, S apostrophe, discussions, negotiations take place, and the work of the commissioner needs to take place. I think in some respects, they can operate on a dual track. I also, while I would love to opine how the Department of Education works and why, instead, what I will say is this, given that the state of New Jersey and the operation of the executive and legislative, we want to see communities do exactly what you're describing, and given that the analysis of our very experienced experts suggests there will not be any content in terms of facial issues, ability to operate a thorough and efficient education, things that are really of constitutional dimension, which is what it would take to stop this, I have no reason to believe that it will be a lengthy or difficult process to get the commissioner to approve this. Remember, the commissioner is not approving whether or not this happens. The voters do that. The commissioner's only role is to act as sort of a gatekeeper, is what is being presented, threatening on a level of a constitutional issue in such a way that it should not be submitted to the voters. And so I'm comfortable that this, if this is not on the ballot in November, it's not going to be because we can't get a response from the Department of Education. My expectation is that your senators will do what they can to make sure that whatever happens here, it's not going to get held up because of that. You know, before this law was passed, the last time the legislature went near the issue of school regionalization was in 1993. of school regionalization was in nineteen ninety-three. So, um, it's fair to describe that effort to encourage school regionalization as an absolute failure. Why would I say that? Because in those thirty years, there were three regional school districts created, and there were three dissolved. Net impact, zero. So if you are setting public policy for the state, you want to move the needle, and after nearly thirty years, all you have to show is a net zero, you've got to do something different. Hence the bill that we have now, with a great deal of financial benefits that didn't exist before, you know, the state pays for the, the study, the state pays for the election, the state provides for additional aid to districts that are willing to do this, not just holding you on this, but actually providing additional aid. None of that existed before. So if the state is going to pass this law, the governor is going to enforce this law, monies are set aside to encourage the use of this law, that going to get held up, particularly in communities like yours, where there don't seem to be anything remotely close to constitutional issues? I understand the question and appreciate it more than you can imagine, but I don't think that is going to be an issue for us. And certainly, to be certain, we're involved, we're working because to make sure that it's not.
I'm Tara Beans, one of two Hiawatha, Oceanport, New Jersey. I represent, I am superintendent of schools of the tri district, so I represent, uh, the, the school district. I want to make a couple comments because I think there's been some misrepresentation of our study. So I was not here prior to July of this year, so I can only speak on kind of what I was told and what my boards of education have explained to me in terms of the process in the past. So in twenty nineteen, when this study was done, it was done with very limited engagement with the three school districts, and from what I understand, very limited conversation and engagement with the other two school districts that are impacted by the Shore Regional and Oceanport schools. At that time, based on that study in twenty nineteen and the current legislation that Mr. Gaddy already was talking about, the school boards all had concerns about that study. At that point, this school's going to apply for a leap grant. They were awarded a leap grant in twenty twenty-one, which was at the same time that Seabright was also awarded a leap grant in twenty twenty-one, to investigate this very question. In our application, we were investigating the regionalization of the three existing school districts into a pre-teen, twelve, all-purpose district, because we are not, and then any other configurations that would make sense, which also specifically stated Seabright. Now, Seabright comes with a lot of contributions because of its current agreement with the school districts that they are currently consolidated with, which is Shore Regional and Oceanport. I am not debating whether or not the funding formula used in Seabright for Shore Regional and Oceanport is fair. We have nothing to do with that, that is a separate issue, but that does come with complications. We applied for this study, we technically have, until September of twenty twenty-two to complete our study, but because of conversations that were held very early on with the mayor and councils, or the mayors, and their borough administrators in both Atlantic Highlands and Highlands, we did agree to accelerate our study. And to complicate that, this legislation, which was on Governor Murphy's desk for a very long time, was not signed into law until mid-January. Because of that, our study, which looks at the consolidation of the three existing districts, first, because there are within this legislation intrinsic savings within the legislation, because we are in two of our districts, S two districts. So we lose funding through this S two formula, we have lost funding. So there are financial incentives just for the three districts to consolidate that would delay some of that, um, tax, what we're losing in taxes, or what we're losing in state aid, that would be delayed or would reduce how much we're losing in state aid over a certain period of time. So first, we're looking at that piece and all of the complications that were brought up here, like collective bargaining agreements, transportation, uh, all of our contracts, what that would look like in terms of our governance structure, which, to be honest, in terms of Seabright, there are none of those complications. We're not merging with an additional school district. We just have to worry about those complications for three, right? So that's part A. Part B of our study is to look at other configurations, namely Seabright. Now, within this legislation, there is a five-year withdrawal period that Seabright would have to go through from Shore Regional and Oceanport, which is now a mechanism for them to withdraw over time. So what our study is doing is now applying this new legislation, because those tax savings and those students would not come in year one of the consolidation. So what we have to look at when we talk about creating a funding formula is, what does that look like over time? And does this happen in phases where we're starting with tax savings? That's what our study looks like. So for everybody listening, we are only studying the consolidation of the three existing districts. That's just not true. But there are applications of this new legislation related to Seabright withdrawing from their existing agreement that we have to take into consideration of our study. We are working very closely with Mark Madyar to look at both that tax, or the, the state aid savings, and then what that looks like over time, because there are a lot of unknowns that we have to look at. When we look at enrollment, we also have to understand how that enrollment would, because I think someone said, right, when you talk about taking kids out of their schools, the law specifically is written so that right now, parents don't have to take their kids out of school. They don't. So we don't know how many children we would actually get from Seabright. We don't know what that would mean in terms of enrollment. We don't know what that would mean in terms of enrollment, um, transportation costs or pieces like that. So we are also looking at this from a five to ten-year period, because after ten years of us spilling around with the formula, the funding formula, after ten years, you have to lock it in. So we would have to know, we can experiment with what those savings are, but after ten years, we have to lock in a funding formula. So if five of those years are in flux, we have to look at a projection that is realistic for us. So that's what we are studying right now. I just wanted to clarify that our study has two parts. They are just not immediate because of this legislation, and we're looking at that very, very closely. Granted, in twenty nineteen, the legislation didn't exist. Even when your study was updated, the legislation wasn't completely signed. So that's why, April, May, we are working, I mean, around the clock to get our study completed, the application of the new legislation. We are committed to the process, my boards of education have been committed to the process, we are committed to that process, but I just wanted to clear up that we are looking at both of these pieces, but we are especially looking at it under the lens of the new legislation.
So just very briefly, if I may, uh, Mayor, and I, I certainly thank Dr. Beams for that, so just two very quick points. One, as it relates to, to Oceanport and Shore Regional. He talked about the way that this legislation is designed to facilitate the creation of new regional school districts. So the law does provide, so that nobody's confused about what the law looked like before, where Seabright would have to get the voting cooperation of the other communities to vote its way out of Oceanport or Shore Regional. So that's one of the things the law changed, right? So if, uh, there is a mechanism for Seabright to participate in the creation of the K-12 regional school district model at the state trial facility, Seabright does not need the approval of Oceanport and Shore Regional. There are financial considerations which are baked into our report, while Dr. Beams is correct, the, the law that exists now wasn't the law when our study was done. It was in process in bill form, so we did calculate what that would look like. So when I talk about the, the financial impact and, and the money Seabright would, would bring into a K-12 regional, it also accounts for the fact that we've been making payments to Shore Regional and Oceanport, but does not mean the voters in those towns to approve its departure. So that's one aspect of the law, and I thank you, that was also changed, though we didn't touch on. And then the second thing is I want to talk about the distinction that doesn't sound like it's different, but it is, between Seabright, Seabright's withdrawal from its current structure and the withdrawal of its students. And again, if there are people here from Seabright, I want you to understand, just as Dr. Beams pointed out, this is designed to occur without disrupting where students are currently educated. And I think that's one of the remarkable things to that, right? You're talking about creating a new school district, you're talking about saving millions of dollars a year in tax savings, and you're going to do that without disrupting where students are currently educated. So what does that mean? So it means if you are a, a Seabright student who is currently in Oceanport, let's say, in third grade, if this were to happen next year, right, if the transformation takes place next year, where does that third grader in Seabright go? Well, they'd go to fourth grade in Oceanport, just as they would now. But if you are four years old rather than a fourth grade, and this happens, where would you go to kindergarten, right? Depending on where there's assigned, either an, an elementary school with Highlands or Atlantic Highlands, but you wouldn't go to Oceanport. And the same is true with the, with the students at the high school level. So it would take five years for the students to be phased out, and this is something that Seabright had to account for in its finances, but Seabright would instantly be a part of a new regional district, and that was submitted to the voters, and that's what the voters approved. So it's not that it takes five years for Seabright to become part of the region. It takes five years for Seabright to end its financial entanglements with Shore and Oceanport. It takes years for those students to graduate from the school in which they are. Uh, and so that's why the full impact of Seabright's participation isn't felt until that five years is up, because the students are coming to the new schools one at a time. The fact that this needs to be phased in, uh, that is accounted for in the study, but we talked about savings, and I think this is something else Dr. Beams was driving at, of course, what happens in those first five years is important, but then you also have to look at the long-term nature of this marriage, if it were to occur, what do the savings look like in each of those years? And again, there have to be savings in each of those years, or how could you, despite the educational benefits, which again are frequently talked about by a similar report to Dr. Beams, I assume they're important to the parents out there, in addition to those benefits, there have to be financial benefits that you can say are going to exist in the tenth year and the fifteenth year. So that makes it somewhat challenging, particularly since you're starting to talk at what you get to ten years, fifteen years out, our kids don't exist yet. And so that is the significance of the point I made earlier about having that tripwire or circuit breaker, there's various names, none of which are used in the law, it's a reset. If there is some unanticipated increase or decrease in student population from one of the towns, you have to lock in savings so that the formula that the voters approved in year one does not have an unintended consequence in year ten or fifteen. Again, sounds complicated, but the critical issue here is that this process, new though it may be, is designed to facilitate a certain amount of predictability that did not exist before. Because as complicated as it might be to figure out what do we want to look like in year five or year ten, up until this law was passed, you have one shot at it. The voters approved a tax levy, it's locked in for ten years, and then the voters in each of the towns have to vote, and have to pass in all the towns, in order for it to be changed again. This allows you to make those decisions now into the future. So again, I, I think something that the legislature is doing to try to encourage this process, and those are the sort of discussions, to go back to your questions, ma'am, that have to, have to be had in that May to August time period. Again, this is really just a meeting about process and all the steps that need to get, to be taken to drive us through this process, to get us to where we agree on how to move forward. I believe you want to speak?
Harry Callis, Atlantic Highlands, State Avenue. I was on the school board in nineteen ninety-five to two thousand, and we tried to regionalize and failed. But I just wanted to say, it wasn't really a question. I wanted to say that going through, in all respects, after being filled in through all the facts and figures now, I think it's a little premature. I think the bottom line is that the people here that are interested in the context of regionalization, the idea is to get it on the ballot and let the voters decide. It's a big year, big year in our country for parental rights, and parents have the right to vote how it's going to happen. You can't decide right now whether it's good, bad, make money, lose money. I think we just have to put it on the ballot, and we're going to have the answers. And I hope that Atlantic Highlands doesn't hold it up, because it's perfect timing. So that is really just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Gina Malick, I live at C five, Hope Side Court. Uh, I spent twenty years as an English teacher. I was first elected to the Highlands Board of Ed in twenty eighteen, and I was just reelected in twenty twenty-one. I've been researching this study for a long time, uh, probably in-depth, close to two years. I've talked about this topic with the Senate President, current, not current, but, uh, Steve Seating, personally, at our, um, delegate assembly. Last month, I received the Master Board Member Certification from the New Jersey School Boards Association, but I'm not here, thank you, but I'm not here as a board member. I'm here as a mom. I'm here as a mom of a student at Henry Hudson. And I think that, like a lot of moms, uh, kids at the public schools here in Highlands, educational equity and service to our children is paramount. And this issue would be great if it provided, uh, tax savings to us, but I think what's most important is that it will provide the best educational opportunities for all of our kids. I wish that the attitude were more enthusiastic from the Atlantic Highlands Council, but I was taken aback by how that all started tonight. But I hope that, uh, the enthusiasm will increase as people hear more. I want to thank the council. This is the first time since I've been on the board, and that was, I mean, you know, just time-wise, not, has nothing to do with me being on the board, but since I've really been interested in this, and, and as a parent of a student, that I've ever seen a public meeting where someone is providing information, and I know that there are, um, school board meetings you can go to, but some of us just simply can't make it, and certainly, public portion of three minutes isn't, as in-depth as this, and there are resources that are here, and that people who are here to answer our questions aren't here at board meetings, so I really appreciate that. So, uh, I just wanted to make the comment that, uh, seventy-five percent of the residents who are surveyed in Highlands are in favor of regionalization. This is a discussion that's been going on for almost a century. You can look and, five years ago, twenty years ago, forty years ago, this discussion, not only this, but this talk has been going on. And it is time that someone steps up and advocates for our children and does what is right for our kids, so that the kids of Highlands, and I wasn't elected by the people of Atlantic Highlands, and as much as I respect the service of the tri district, we represent the people of Highlands, and I care about what happens to the kids in Highlands, and I care about what happens to the kids like my son, and I want them to get the best education that they can. And with all due respect to board members, and I'm one of them, but I'm here as a mom tonight, we're not experts. Some of us just joined the board like two months ago, we didn't know what else was running. So let's present the information to the public, because we are smart, we are educated, and we care about our children. And thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Seabright Council, for doing what's right for our kids. I didn't know it was an option to move on without Atlantic Highlands, but I don't think that the people of Highlands, after waiting so long, are going to wait much longer.
Anyone else before we close by the portion?
I'm Arubus, forty-eight, first time in one thousand. Could you kindly explain, in a perfect scenario, assuming all three of these counties join to the board with us, how the legality can work of letting longbridge schools, they can give us school districts out, but there's rumor out there that there could be a potential lawsuit. Is that true? Is it not true?
Sure. The, the law is designed to solve that problem, right? So, um, before this law was passed, there was a great deal of discussion and even a small piece of litigation in, in terms- there was a great deal of discussion, and even a small piece of litigation in terms of Seabright's current entanglement with Shore Regional. This law is designed to put all of that to bed. So if the voters, to use your standard, if the voters of the three communities agree to form a new K-12 regional school district, that's that. And Seabright is permitted to join because of this legislation.
But there'd be no ramifications coming from the other headfirst.
Well, I mean, I can't promise that they're going to file suit.
I don't think this is solved because of some of the rumors you reported around out there, and I figured you're the expert there.
Yeah, I mean, let me put it this way. It's not a lawsuit that would concern me, simply because the law specifically addresses that scenario. The voters approve it, Seabright joins the new K-12 regional district. The law provides for monetary compensation, Seabright has agreed to provide it. So let me put it this way. I don't imagine a legitimate lawsuit, but that doesn't mean I can promise there won't be one. The law is designed to prevent another community or the district from getting in the way of Highlands, Atlantic Highlands, and Seabright forming a new K-12 school district. Anyone else? And I'll close public portion. Does anyone else have anything from the table?
Just a thanks to everybody who came out to give information tonight, directed from that much, not Facebook, not social media.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Before you guys leave, I just wanted to say, just in closing, and Mrs. Malnick said it on many points, but I just wanted to underscore a couple of things here, that everyone talks about the economics of this. It's not just about economics. It's about better socialization for children to know each other and know people from different communities. When you know people from different communities, you socialize better. When you're socializing better, you learn better, and the economics is the cherry on top. And with that, I bid you goodnight, and thank you so much for joining us. I make a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Chala? Councilmember Chala? Councilmember Malnick?
Yes.
Council President Olszewski?
Yes.
Mayor Boian?
Yes, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.